Mr. Carpenter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R. We have five items to consider this morning on the planning agenda. Two of those items, number three and number four, on your agenda. We have a request to continue on behalf of the applicant. It says June 11th, but this body has changed that meeting to June 10th, so we would like to modify that request to continue to June 10th at 4:00 PM in this location. You'd like to take those two continuances first?
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to items number three and four to be continued to June 10th at this facility here.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried, please. Board is there.
Thank you. That takes us to the first item, which is a legislative item. It's the Golf Garden Large-Scale Amendment. This is a request to approve to transmit to DEO. Project number LUM 18-000015. It's been reviewed by Bob Barante. It's a large-scale amendment application submitted by Core Engineering and Consulting on behalf of the Holiday Shore Group. They're requesting approval to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map from Coastal Center to General Commercial, and to change the official zoning district from Coastal Center to General Commercial on approximately 35.35 acres. Projects located at 12958 US Highway 98 West, Miramar Beach, Florida, and identified by the parcel number in your package. You may be familiar with the location as the Golf Garden, the Executive Golf Course in Miramar on the north side of Highway 98. The applicant's here and is ready to present their case.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed Stanford with Core Engineering and Consulting. S-T-A-N-F-O-R-D is the spelling of my last name. We appreciate your consideration for this application for a large-scale amendment for about 35 and a half acres from Coastal Center to General Commercial. There's a little bit of history here. We'll go through it, just so you have a background of where we have been and what we've done to get here. We'll also talk about some of our conversations with the neighboring community, and then some of the information that was presented at the Planning Commission meeting, where we were recommended to proceed with a six-to-one vote. So it is currently, has a land use of Coastal Center, and it has a zoning of Coastal Center. Back in October, we applied for a, the land use change. We were actually going from Coastal Center to Coastal Center mixed use. It's a fairly large project, so we were going to get a lot of those mixed-use elements. What the mixed use would have allowed us to do is to, you know, enhance our uses along the commercial corridor, actually increase the density. But let me, let me go through a couple of things real quick that I want to make sure we understand. During our application, the new future land use and comprehensive plan was adopted in December. So we had to go back to the county after we had already applied and search for a new applicable land use that would, that would meet those criteria. Now, some of the language has changed, or had changed at the time. So we attempted to go to a village mixed use, and you'll see a theme here. We were trying to get a mixed-use land use at the time. But because of the way the, the language is written, and then, of course, we had a challenge by the South Walton Community Council, when we were held up for, oh, I don't know, probably 90 days there, we went back and forth with the county on what our goals and objectives were, and what the, what the Land Development Code reads, and how the comprehensive plan reads. The county recommended, through our conversations, that general commercial would be the most applicable. It, it allows us to do, you know, a drive-through and a certain other, you know, commercial elements that, that will enhance, you know, the viability of the project, obviously. But the, the three or four land uses that I'm about ready to read from, they all have generally the same, the same allowable uses. And this is more for the folks that are standing behind me than maybe y'all at this point, just so that we can maybe get to the bottom of this and make sure that everybody's comfortable with what we're, what we're asking for today. So the existing land use is Coastal Center. The primary uses that are allowed are single-family residential, attached and detached, short-term vacation rental units, attached and detached, multifamily residential, community facilities and services, civic uses, workplaces, commercial uses, which include retail, entertainment, restaurant services, and lodging, and no outdoor entertainment, broadcasting, you know, some other little things, retail stores, shoe stores, sports club, fitness centers, dance schools, et cetera. So those are the uses that are allowed. We can even do dinner clubs, theaters, garden supply, restaurants, and a limited lodging, which would be 125-room hotel. That's what it is today. The one thing it won't allow us to do is a drive-through, except for financial institutions. So we could do a bank there, but we couldn't do necessarily a quick-service restaurant or something like that. The Coastal Center mixed use, which we were requesting originally, allows for community facilities and services, civic uses, general commercial, single-family residential, attached and detached, multifamily residential, short-term vacation rental units, entertainment activity based on uses, including arcades, fitness centers, sports clubs, nightclubs, indoor movie theaters, dinner clubs, and restaurants with outdoor entertainment. So we are not going for Coastal Center mixed use anymore, but they all have basically the same, the same allowable uses. And that one also would allow for 125-room hotel. The third that we attempted to go for, and we had to actually change our application to, was village mixed use, allowable uses, general commercial uses, community facilities and services, civic uses, neighborhood commercial uses, 125-room hotel, active-passive recreation, single-family residential, attached and detached, multifamily residential, short-term vacation rental units, entertainment and recreation, including sports club, health club, lounges, restaurants, et cetera. So they all allow basically the same types of development. It's how these, that's how the, the wording is structured in here that makes the difference in how we can approach the project. With the current land use, in order to get the density and the uses that we are allowed under the Land Development Code, we could actually orient the, the project really east and west, facing along a new, a new right-of-way that would connect Highway 98 to Walton Way at the north side of the property. And we could literally utilize that road frontage as new commercial road frontage. That's not our intention here, and that's why we have requested the general commercial. We would rather go from a higher intensity, higher-density use that is along Highway 98, and get less dense and less intense as we move for, towards the north and the existing single-family residential. It should be noted, if you don't have the, there's an aerial that shows a wetland crossing there, that's about 2.7 acres, and it's between 150 and, and 300 feet wide. That provides, you know, an existing natural buffer between our proposed southern commercial and higher-density uses and the neighborhoods to the north, which are single-family residential. The general commercial that we're requesting allows for offices, retail, wholesale, lodging, restaurants, shopping centers, medical facilities, commerce parks, fueling gas stations, repair shops, convenience stores with gas pumps, supermarkets, and other similar business activities. It does say we can do a mobile home park. We would put it on record that we will never do a mobile home park here. And then it allows for vertical mixed use with multifamily dwelling units and commercial use and/or apartments on a conditional basis. So that's, again, they're all very similar in, in the way they are, in the uses that are allowed, but it's how the development is constructed through the verbiage within these four land uses that is, makes the difference. The general commercial land use gives us the flexibility to have that north-south orientation of, of less dense and then more dense as we move to the south and the, on the commercial corridor of 98. So that's the basis of where we, where we've been and where we're at. It's been a long time since October when we first applied for this. There's been some, at the Planning Commission meeting, there were some questions from the neighbors about some other ancillary issues that are, that are associated with this project, which is a, you know, primarily a new county road that we have been working with the county on to establish a signal and a right-of-way that would connect Highway 98 to Walton Way. That's not necessarily part of this discussion, but it, it has been part of the, the record as we met with the Planning Commission last month or so. The concerns that we heard from the citizenry at the time were the density of the project and being developed as multifamily, which we can develop multifamily today. So, you know, whether it's, whether it's Coastal Center or whether it's general commercial, we can still develop the multifamily uses, and we can still develop commercial uses. It's just how they're oriented that will make the difference in, in their experience, so to speak. They also mentioned that their roads within the Forest Shore subdivision, they're lacking sidewalks, and they have a lot of, you know, landscaping trucks, delivery trucks that park within the right-of-way, forcing them on either side of the truck into, you know, drainage ditches, et cetera. So that's a, a safety issue, but that doesn't have a whole lot to do with the request today, which is merely a land use change. This is not even a development order at this point. We don't have a finalized plan. We will come back to the Planning Commission, the Technical Review Committee, and of course, y'all, to, to get those things approved if and when we get there. So the other thing that they were talking about was the potential for the, their Forest Shore neighborhood to become a bypass if there were, if there were any issues on, on Highway 98. Well, there might be some folks who do end up bypassing and coming down that new right-of-way, but, you know, our hope is, and I'm sure it's your hope, that the six-laning will resolve a lot of our, our traffic flow issues. So, you know, with that, we're here to answer questions. This really just gives us the flexibility to orient our project higher-intensity to less-intensity as it goes from south to north. And we are merely utilizing the tools that are available to us through the county, the Land Development Code, and the comprehensive plan, but I'm open to any questions y'all might have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I didn't hear, on the general commercial that you're looking for, I didn't hear anything about community uses or recreational uses. Is that also included?
I'll tell you exactly what, what it says. Offices, retail, wholesale, lodging, restaurants, shopping centers, medical facilities, commerce parks, fueling or gas stations, repair shops, convenience stores, supermarkets, and similar businesses, mobile home parks, vertical mixed use with, you know, multifamily and commercial, communication towers, community facilities and services, civic uses, accessory structures, and uses in connection with any lawfully existing primary use, and then multifamily residential apartment complexes. So it doesn't say anything else about, you know, necessarily recreation, so to speak.
It does have community.
Yeah, it has civic uses and has community facilities.
Okay, what's the board's wishes? We have to have a motion before we can let the audience talk.
Can I mention one more thing?
Sure.
We have met with the, with the, with some representatives from the neighborhood. And, you know, this is our, we, when we do this, when I do this, our goal is to find a way to be good neighbors. We know that, that folks do not want land developed. That's just the way it is. Nobody wants to see the golf garden go away. The owner's here today. They've held it for 30 years. Their group is, you know, getting to that point in their life cycle, lifespan, where they're, you know, ready to sell and ready to do something else. So we're still here to make sure that we are good neighbors, that we communicate with them, that we coordinate them, with them. I've been up here enough and been grilled enough that, you know, we don't like doing that. But we know that there's, there's owners' rights, and then we also know that there's sensitive issues with regards to our neighbors. We're here to find a way to strike that balance. So I just want to let you know that, that even as we go through today, if there's anything I can, any fears that I can allay or anything that I can respond to, you know, directly, we will, we will absolutely do that in order to make sure that they have a comfort level of what we're doing. Like I said, we're not going to do those, and, and I don't think y'all would let us do some of the things that are in here, like a mobile home park right next to single-family residential. We're not going to do those things. You will see those things when we come through TRC Planning Commission and the BCC meeting, if we get to the point where we're doing a development order. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Our primary discussion or decision on this project is the land use change, not anything dealing with the development order or the final look at what it may look like out there, including the roadway, which I'm not so fond of, but anyway. For that, I'll go ahead, since we're just dealing with the land use change, motion to approve.
Second. No discussion.
Okay, Matt?
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a point of clarification. In the categories of primary uses, one of those primary uses is civic uses, and within the defined primary uses in section 2.03.00, categories of primary uses in the Land Development Code, that civic use does allow a, a park available to the public. I know there was some consideration that this might become a park if the county chose to acquire it. I realize that's not what is before us today, but I just wanted to, to clarify that that use would also be an allowable use within this land use category that's being proposed.
And the developer could do that, because I don't, you know, I think this is a piece of property that's been brought to us through the TDC for purchase, and we did not do that.
Yes, sir, and I understand that. I just wanted to make that clarification, that this land category would allow that use also. And we'd also like to request the staff report be entered into the record.
Okay. Any comment from the audience? You in the back, not you, John. You, you were second. You way in the back. Come up front and state your name and, and spell your last name, please. Now, keep this conversation strictly about the land use change. This has not anything to do with, anything other than changing the land use. All, all of this will be re-discussed in every hearing, all the way up back, including the board.
My name is Brian Riley. I live at 1084 Forest Shore Drive.
Mr. Riley, spell your last name.
I'm neither elected nor appointed to represent anyone but my own interests.
Would you spell your last name?
R-E-I-L-L-Y.
Thank you.
I would wish the developer profitable good luck on whatever he wants to build over there. That's not my business. It's his property. The only thing that I care about that you specifically requested I not address is the connection from 98 to Forest Shore at that end.
That, that's correct.
And that's what I'm opposed to, and that's, and I'll stop right there.
Okay, we're not, we're, you will have plenty of opportunity to state your opinions and your objections to that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. John?
John McGee, M-A-G-E-E. Commissioners, that won't be too long. I know you don't want to address traffic and so forth, but what I do want to point out, two of us in this room have been residents in Holiday Shore since 1983. So we've seen the changes. I am also the past president of the Holiday Shores Homeowners Association, which we disbanded because we didn't have any issues anymore to take care of. One of the issues we did do was with this golf course. When the golf course was going in originally, the question was about the road going from Forest Shore to 98. It was agreed then, and the commissions approved it, not to put a road through. Now, I've heard that it's going to be inevitable or whatever, but we, the people of, of Holiday Shores or Walton Way, will let you know that, you know, we live there year-round. You already have the bypass problem coming from the patio store all the way up to Holiday Road and through in this traffic. You're just going to increase it. And whatever you approve today for a change, I heard a lot of commercial property being talked about. Commercial property brings more traffic into an area. People have to find ways out. Change will happen. I'm sure something, you know, the developers want to build something, but we got to think about the future, the infrastructure problems that you, as Commissioners, will deal with, and Commissioners thereafter. So I ask you to think wisely on what you approve, and if you approve it, think of the future, if your grandchildren were there and so forth. It's dangerous right now. We do need, and I do support anything about sidewalks and stuff, and last but not least, as I have admitted 28, we very rarely, and I say we, the, the voters of Miramar Beach very rarely come in front of you and ask for things to be done in the area. Very rarely. I'm sure most of you can even count on one hand how many times. But we are the people who put people in office, because we are the year-round residents. And we have been working with you on the tourist problems, but I think the time has now changed that we of Miramar Beach and Santa Rosa Beach need to stand up and say, okay, start spending money in our area, hold back on your development. A lot of counties are doing that until your infrastructure's there. And the six-lane road isn't going to ease the problem at all. It's going to create more problem with additional traffic. Again, think before you vote. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Let's keep it quiet, please.
Hi, my name's Peter Wright. I was probably the guy, W-R-I-G-H-T. I was the guy that John was referring to. He's been, my family has been there since 1983. That's when we built our house. We bought the lots prior to that before. I raised a family in that area. My kids played on the golf garden, went fishing. We had a lot of fun at Ballpark together with the owners and stuff. I just went through a development in Freeport to put a business over there, and I had respect for the city and my neighbors and the county to present my plan even before, I had to do a land change, land use change also. I had respect for the city and, and the residents of the city, the Walton County also, to at least let them know what I'm going to do. And, and whatever somebody wants to do with their land, that has nothing to do, you know, I mean, I believe in property rights. But the one thing I do have a lot is respect for the guys that live next to me. And just allowing somebody to know exactly what's going on instead of an open-ended checkbook or an open-ended order, that they can really do anything they want to after a land use change is done, is a little bit disrespectful for the people that live in the area. And I, I wish that the owners would go back and think about this a little bit and see if they really want to develop it, or if they really just want to sell it. Because if they want to sell it, no matter what, if you change this land use, somebody might not have the same feelings as they do growing up in the community. So all I can do is wish y'all wouldn't do a land use change until somebody comes and says, hey, listen, this is what we're going to do. We're going to enhance the place. We're going to make it nicer for everybody. I hear about a road going up to the, you know, more access to the beach. There's no room on the beach for access. There, what we do have is a great community that when my wife and I moved there, it was the only affordable place to go. We had to drive down Highway 98 along the beach to get there. They built the new highway, four lanes. That's going to alleviate all the traffic. It didn't. It increased the amount of traffic, and it increased the amount of development. Six lanes is going to do the same thing. It's up to y'all right here to decide what's really going on. And if we want to make it nicer for the people that live there, great. If we don't want to make it nicer for the people that live there, and just look at the money side of it, I understand. It's just the respect for the people that live, live there is what I think y'all should be looking at. Thanks.
Either keep your clapping to a quiet or step outside. We've, we've got a lot of work to do here today. I think Ms. Bowman was next.
My name's Jim Thurman, T-H-U-R-M-A-N. I live at 324 Walton Way. I just kind of want to reiterate on the change of land use and how it impacts areas around that change of land use. You say it may not be appropriate to talk about that, but if you put a park, if you put a park in the back or some of the housing developments, commercial developments, the impact on Forest Shore is going to be incredible. Forest Shore is a family community. Children are out there anytime, day or night, on the street. People are walking their dogs. And I think the county commissioners need to consider, when you do a land, a change of land use, how it impacts the immediate adjoining areas. And that's exactly what we're concerned about. We're concerned about children getting hit by cars. If any of you all come to the connection between Forest Shore and Holiday, on any given day, hundreds of cars use that as a bypass, and it's really, really dangerous. We just would hope that you all consider these things in your land use approval and how it impacts the adjoining areas. Thank you.
Kaway Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Okay, first, I thought I explained to you all that this meeting is unconstitutional because you've separated it from the regular BCC meeting. And the fact that you're doing that is to avoid people from knowing about it, which is proof positive that you know what you're doing is wrong. Okay, so land use and property rights, right? Does your neighbor have the right to sink your house? The way that your neighbor treats his land directly affects your house when there's nothing underneath the ground but water. Every single tree you take down on your neighbor's lot endangers your neighbor's house. What's the point of defining a land use when really you're just going to do whatever you want to do anyways? We've seen you break your own rules a million times. You just redefine the English language. More businesses, more homes, mean more trucks. All of the trucks in America are corrupted by China. You are being used by China because China cannot buy agricultural land in Florida. So they have tricked you into changing the definition of agricultural land to non-agricultural. Our country is under attack with construction. We are being used with our own stupidity because you are so greedy for money, and the state of Florida is so ignorant that you are just going to reclassify the entire state of Florida as a concrete construction truck, and everyone is going to die from cancer and the Black Plague. Where is that guy that had that bandage on his neck? cancer and the black plague. Where is that guy that had that bandage on his neck? He's not here, huh? I have lost my voice 27 times in the last two and a half years from screaming in pain from radioactive trucks. China knew that there were so few people that could feel this radiation that you would just call me a screaming Indian.
Ms. Bowman?
Construction.
Please.
Construction, all construction.
No, no, we're talking about a particular land use change.
Yes, yes, exactly. You don't have the right to legally change the definition of the land in Florida, not the BCC, not the state of Florida. Nobody has the right to change the land from agricultural to non-agricultural because the state of Florida has to remain green, growing plants. You don't have the right to change the definition of land. You don't, because you don't realize that you're being used to sink the state of Florida. George Soros is taking wet land that is perfectly good to grow cedar, cypress, all kinds of green growing things can grow on wet land, and you are turning them into rice patties. Rice patties is what you are making for China. They are prepping our country for an invasion, and all these holes are rice patties.
Anyone else want to follow that? We got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. To the people out here tonight, this is not your last time to speak. You can fight this all the way back to us again and through us. This is a land use change that were recommended by the Planning Commission, and we, we have, there's a lot of work to be done on this if it ever gets back in front of us. So, don't take this as we're shutting you down. We're not. You have plenty, and Ed, would you like to speak to?
Yeah, absolutely.
He has a right to answer the questions. I'm sorry I didn't let him.
It's okay. To Mr. Wright, we did sit, just sit down with a few folks, and I'm sorry that, you know, you haven't seen the, a master plan or a potential master plan, if you will, but we did sit down with Tracy and John Hook to discuss it with them. We do have a right to develop this. The new land use that we've asked for is almost very, I mean, it's almost exactly like the old land use. There's differences in density. More importantly, though, it's the, it's how the land use is written and how the project must be developed according to Coastal Center that is a little bit, you know, it provides some limitations that would make a new road, quote unquote, if that happens, more of a commercial thoroughfare. That is not our intent. Our intent is to take everything that's higher density, higher intensity to the south. We're willing, you know, through this process to make sure that we coordinate with these folks. I've got a lot of emails from them, and we want to make sure that they're buffered correctly, that there's compatibility. And I'm just saying that we know that these bigger projects can be, you know, contentious, and that's not our goal here. Our goal is to work within the community. Now, I hear some things like, oh, well, make it better for everyone. You know, I just don't know what that means. I mean, we're just trying to develop a piece of land, and we'll do the best we can. So, we appreciate y'all today.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Ed?
Sorry, sorry.
I just want to say, I mean, it's no big secret. I want this to be a park. And just to defend, you've been very cordial in working to try to get to that, to that point. So, this, your being here today in no way obstructs that. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Yep. One other quick thing. My good friend, John McGee, who I've known John a long time. We were charter members in the South Walton Kiwanis Club together back in the day. John sent me an email and instructed me that I had to announce the email because of the Sunshine Law. Unfortunately, John, this is not a quasi judicial matter, so I, we don't, we don't have to report those except in quasi judicial matters. So, that's why I just want to give you a heads up for future use, John. Thank you all.
I'd have to submit a book if I did.
Yeah. If you people from Forest Shores would like a few minutes to leave, or if you'd rather stay and watch the rest of this, it could be an hour, it could be three hours. We never know. But we'll give you a few minutes to get out. And I would say one other thing. Thank y'all for participating, and don't quit participating. The problem we have in any form of government is lack of participation from the public. So, thank y'all for coming and continue to participate in all matters.
Thank you.
on any of the remaining items on the agenda, if you would, stand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial provided to this board will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, whenever you come forward, if you would, state your name, spell your last name, and state that you've been sworn in. Have any of the commissioners had any ex parte communications on any of the items remaining on the agenda?
No.
We're saying no from all the commissioners, so we're ready to proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Our first quasi judicial item this morning is item number two on our agenda, cottages at 393 South, and this is a request to approve by final plat. It's been reviewed by Bob Baronte. It's an application submitted by Emerald Coast Associates on behalf of James F. Adams, requesting approval to plat 38 single-family residential lots, along with a pool amenity on approximately 14.27 acres with a future land use and zoning district of small neighborhood and neighborhood infill. The project's located on the west side of County Road 393 South, just north of the Cypress Pond Road intersection and south of the Edgewood Terrace intersection. This is identified by the parcel numbers in your package. This preliminary plat was approved by the Technical Review Committee on November 7, 2018, and follows the previous approval of the development order for this particular project. The applicant is here and is prepared to answer any questions you might have for him. Are there further questions for me this morning?
Yeah, if you want all the, right?
And I'd like to introduce the staff report into evidence. Thank you, sir.
Would applicant like to make a statement?
Good morning. My name is Darrell Burgess, B-U-R-G-I-S. I am with Emerald Coast Associates and was the surveyor and responsible charge preparing the plat. We are confident we have met and addressed any and all concerns of the various county agencies, in particular and most importantly, Public Works. We do feel that this meets full compliance, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions. All right, more of an engineering facet, but all of which there's a major, it all collects to the pond in the middle. It is a, I believe, a wet weather pond. All permits are approved and in hand from the various agencies, be it maybe ACOE or FDEP, but it is all collected from the outskirts to the central pond in the center. There is a wet, it does pop off to a wetlands in the north, to the north. There is a drainage structure that connects the pond from the north side of the pond to the south side of the wetlands, north of the project, but still owned by the client, and there's a drain adjacent between the two lots that are shown. It runs due north and south from the north side of the pond.
I'm sorry, not to step in to save Mr. Burgess, but so this is here for final plat approval.
I understand that.
I know, but Mr. Burgess might not be prepared to address all those questions. So, but I was saying.
He's an engineer?
No, he's a surveyor.
Oh, well, his brother, I think, is an engineer.
That's true, but I don't know those credentials transfer. But what I was going to say is all the stormwater issues would have been addressed during the DO process, right, Mac?
And?
Still don't hurt to hear it. It don't hurt to hear it.
I know, I was just trying to.
Well, if he can't answer it, say so. You can't answer it, let Dean come up here. But he ain't here.
I'm sorry, sir, he's not present.
You just hang on there, okay?
To be perfectly honest, sir, I'd.
If you don't know, just say you don't know.
I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was designed to the 30 or the 100 year. I do not know.
Matter, Bob, could y'all answer that?
I don't recall, sir.
But these, these questions have already been answered, correct?
Yes, sir, the DO's there.
Okay.
Has somebody made sure that it works before we approved the final plat? That is appropriate.
Well, so, the stormwater issues would have been addressed during the DO phase, and any requirement of Land Development Code would have been met before they received their DO approval.
And it's been inspected? Yes, sir. It has been inspected and approved by Public Works.
I have motion to approve. That's their public comment.
We have a second?
Second.
Any public comment? Let's keep it about this issue, Ms. Bowman.
Koi Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. If it's been inspected and approved by Public Works, then how come he doesn't know if it's 30 or 100 years? Okay, so like, this is already there, like the retention pond he's talking about, and what they've done is, this is wetland that has been growing really poor quality short needle pines. It's forestry. It has a St. Joe marker, stone monument at the corner of this property that's been marked by the IRS. So, they've already started this process. I don't know why they're here just now asking to do it, because they've already dumped what looks like really, really black material, oily and greasy looking, and then really red Georgia clay, and then they put some brownish sand on top of it, and then they made the rice patty in the middle. So, this, this piece of land, if you look at the paperwork on it, is a conservation easement, of course, under the Department of Environmental Protection Agency. Oh, poor Rod Maddox. And it says all this stuff about how you're not allowed to change anything. You have to leave everything in its natural state. And this is where it's just, this whole rigmarole about redefining the English language, and you're just going to take this, this paperwork and make it only apply to like, one little corner of the property, and then you're just going to destroy the rest of it. So, here's what's really weird to me, is that you don't really need to put fill dirt in a wetland in order to build a house there. You could technically build on piles and have a home, but instead you want to fill it up with a bunch of Georgia red clay, because you're actually a mining company that's dumping old slurry on new, new wetland that you're going to redefine by paying the Department of Environmental Protection a whole bunch of money, because the state of Florida thinks that they're just going to redefine all of the conservation land into concrete homes.
Boy, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you could just stay on topic with this particular project.
Well, it is on topic. This is forestry, and it's part of the, geez Louise, I haven't had a full sleep cycle in two and a half years. The Santa Rosa Plantation Company, okay, Angus G. Andrews, if you go back and you map it out, this is part of my land, so you can't do anything with it. It's a, it's a conservation easement, and there's like a 16-page document here that says everything, like you can't even touch a bush.
Ms. Bowman, are you okay?
Yeah, we just got hit with a microwave, but you can't feel it because your vestibular system evolved on European bedrock, but you.
I don't even know what that means.
Exactly, that's why you're not supposed to be running a government.
And I don't think you do either. That's enough for you, Ms. Bowman.
That's it. You ain't going to flip us off anymore. Get.
There's so much radiation here that we're all.
Anybody want to run for county commissioner next time? Is there anybody else that would like to talk?
Motion's there.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. This brings us to item number five on our agenda, our last item. This is the Sunset Key cottages, request to approve by final plat. This plat has been reviewed by Kelly Frymire. It's been submitted by Rare Earth Inc. on behalf of S.K. Inlet LLC. They're requesting approval to plat eight single-family residential lots on approximately 1.03 acres with a future land use of neighborhood infill. Project's located on the west side of North Orange Street, approximately a quarter mile north of the intersection of North Orange and US 98, and it's identified by the project number in your package. This, the preliminary plat application was approved on November 7, 2018 by the Technical Review Committee, and this proposed plat is consistent with the development order previously issued and Chapter 177 of Florida statutes. All fees, except for the recording fee, have been paid by the applicant prior to today. I would like to request the staff report be entered into record.
Ma'am.
Have to answer any additional questions you might have. And the applicant is here also.
Why is, on the fees due prior, why is recreation impact fee in red?
It had not been paid at the time the report was issued, but it has been paid since it was published and provided to you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? See none? All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. That all you have, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.